Yeah.
Yeah, I don't wanna use the wrong terminology. But, but one of the things you wanna do though is to make sure that like so going forward that things like open violations are addressed before they even come before the zoning. Like really because in terms of, or either they're cleaned up as part of it, or readdressed beforehand. So we don't want you guys seeing applications that you can't decide upon on the night of the meeting. This is the one that just happened to be in the process at the moment.
Guys, so in the future, this wouldn't come to us until the permit was closed for the pool.
That's the goal. The, the goal is so we wanna be more fair to them, make it more fair to you guys. So it's not like we're coming here and being like, hey, there's a lot of stuff we're working on still with them.
And Dan, Dan's group.
Oh.
And Dan Port Jeff. The, that was always our policy. Prior to some, to Andy coming in, it was always what viola- the, one of the first questions was, does this property have any violations? Cause it was always, why are we giving a, an application that's got violations on it?
Yeah.
And it was kinda like, oh, well, but we have to hear it, you know, and then.
I know.
And it kind of went back and forth. Um, I mean, from my point of view, we should.
It's fine.
We're not talking about his application, so it's not. We're not, we're not talking about your application.
Yeah, he's not.
But in the future, in the future, um, any application that's coming in front of us should at least have enough of a review on it that if you have open permits, they should be closed and we shouldn't be conditioning them, that they be closed, you know? Because again, this permit is, I think the process.
Well, and also in mind of efficiency, that if there are the open permits that require variances, let's do this all in one hearing. Instead of these processes taking three months because they have to keep returning back.
Exactly. So it looks like the equipment is a foot off one property line, four point six feet off the other.
I haven't seen it better here.
And so one foot, four point six.
The house. Hey, Jen.
And the chain link fence. Hey there.
Hey.
Looks like the chain link fence is, you know, point two feet between the property line, maybe?
Oh, it's a lot of stockade fence.
Yeah, there's dilapidated stockade fence, but then there's also this chain link fence.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right here. And then there's a concrete wall, so there's.
There's a lot going on in the back of this property.
All right, sorry. It's in the residential district code.
All right.
But that's just a policy thing.
I mean, it's, unfortunately, you're.
Yeah, so they could, I think, be six and a half.
No, yeah.
Five, five and a half.
Oh, okay.
So it's, our village code, I guess, in a little bit of conflict with the state code. Well, as long as the state code is less and ours is more.
Exactly, you're allowed to exceed it, yeah.
You can't go below it.
Exactly.
So what does the code say about how far that pool equipment needs to be off the property line then?
It's for our village code?
Is it twenty feet?
How much?
Twenty. Pool equipment.
Five feet.
Five feet?
So it's an active equipment, so? Ten, if it's passive, it's ten. It's five, passive's only for, usually for storage only. So I think it's kinda pushed into active.
Well, this is neither, it's not, it's not a structure, it's a equipment.
Cause in Roosevelt, when they came into us.
You're right, it was pass.
And it was, they used five feet.
Right.
It's always been five feet for pool equipment.
So the four point six is what's in question. Eastern side is five point five, the northern side's four point six.
You're right, equipment's.
Well, but then there's, it's one foot off of the wall. The wall, well, and that property line is, cause the wall's right up on the property line, right? So the northern, I guess that's the northern.
Yeah.
Property line is a foot off of that.
Gailing four and a half feet.
Yeah, but he's saying one foot from the wall.
Okay.
He's saying one foot, I'm looking at him.
Or the wall could be one feet, one foot from the property line. I think that's actually.
Well, we'll have him clarify that.
Yeah.
But it looks like four point eight from the chain link, left to right and up and down. But that doesn't, I mean, if you look at it, assume it's scaled properly, it does look like.
It does. Maybe the, yeah, it's odd, cause there's a wall, a chain link fence, and a stockade fence. All along that same property line. I didn't go in the backyard to look at this one. Alrighty.
The addition is.
Oh, yeah.
It did not get.
Wow.
That's what it is.
That is.
Yeah.
It's nice, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't want Danielle to hear about it.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, please. Dan, you're in trouble.
She wants to take my office and turn it into a walk-in closet instead of. Where am I gonna work?
Basement.
Yeah, that's where she wants to tell me.
That's where you belong.
You have that big shed in, you know, it's gonna end up.
That would be a pleasure, actually.
Yeah.
If we just never come out of there, let's move in.
Shed is an office.
You miss the girl.
They can come visit, yeah, but if I have the dog, that's all I need, yeah.
I forgot I put this in this stuff. What? The equipment was passive.
Dan, Dan.
I'm just gonna learn too. It's so confusing.
All right, since there's, we were here, you wanna just vote on the minute, uh, Tracy, were you here last minute?
No.
Kimbo.
We can.
We can.
Um, anybody have any questions or, um, comments on the minute?
No, it looked good.
Nope.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes submitted. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? You're good. Cindy, minutes are all approved.
Are you folks putting these minutes together now using, uh, Gen AI? Looks like it, little LLM summary. It's okay if you are.
It's easy.
Really? Okay.
You have a five minute. Anybody have any questions or comments on the application?
I guess just one question on the staff memo in general, the staff report typically like there's an, an analysis at the very end, kind of comparing, you know, the criteria and providing kind of some, again, like, uh, it, feedback or analysis, but that.
The neighboring property.
Isn't here anymore, is it? Are they not gonna be in the report?
I did it and, uh, I.
It's all good, I just wasn't sure if that's gonna be, cause.
Going forward, we'll have to, yeah, cause you need that info to see.
It's helpful, we don't need it, but it's helpful.
You don't need it, but it gives us an idea.
Yeah, exactly.
Typical to the neighborhood, or if it's been done before locally, yeah, I just.
Yeah, just, you're basically evaluating the, the application against the, against the, yeah, the criteria.
I think those are guys that actually have practical copies.
Yeah.
I will, I will do that, as well as include like a radius, kinda if local, like.
I mean, that'd be great if you can, like, you know, don't.
Usually, in one of, many years ago, when I started here, um, one of the planners used to give us a report, and in the report was a, um, satellite view of like the immediate gro- property. So I do, are you like, if we were looking at this for a pool, he'd have a, he'd have, he'd have a, uh, aerial.
I think we generally do that digitally now, where we zoom out and we look at what's happening in the neighborhood and we assess whether or not it's conform.
To a year that doesn't have trees?
Well, back in the day before this one.
Correct.
No.
But now, I mean, we, you know, most of the time when we're, we're considering, we do that. Just, we just do it digitally without printing it out and we save trees.
Parker, do me a favor, zoom in on the property. As close as you can go. So that's the pool. Pool equipment's in the back. That's where the addition's going.
And I see the shed.
That's the shed, though, he was just circling.
Right.
Yep. And there's propane tanks up there.
Did the neighbors or anybody object to the addition?
No comments.
Yeah.
And even that pool equipment, even if it is too close, I mean, based upon where his neighbors are, like, not right up on the house.
Right, it's the only thing, the closest structure is the neighbor's shed, looks like.
They did submit a park ground, I think, a pool. Oh, but it's for the public hearing, we have pictures.
Is your mic on?
Yeah, it's for the public hearing.
Yeah, for the public hearing for that, but, um, yeah, I don't see it being, I mean, I don't see pool equipment being an issue, it's just, really a housekeeping.
Yeah, we have one hundred percent, yeah.
No, I need to pull up the email first so that I can.
I'm not gonna email.
So we are confirmed for the December twentieth meeting? Yes?
December fourth.
Fourth, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I think you think of November.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah. That one is, we normally don't have a December hearing, but we're trying to, uh.
Mm-hmm.
Do raise some stuff up.
Yeah, it's two projects on for that.
Dan, can you put the mics on?
Oh, no.
Well, we were getting a lot of feedback.
That one is on.
No, this one's, no, this one. Cause this one was giving the feedback.
Okay, so we are confirmed.
Maybe moving.
I don't know if it's that big of a table, but.
So we are confirmed, December fourth.
Yep.
And what do we have on for December fourth?
Two projects. One of them is a reta- an as-built retaining wall that got emergency permit on thirty-one pilgrim. Yeah, and it just needs a five, it's, uh, because where it's located, it's in the front yard, it has a five-foot setback. It's less than five feet from one of the front property lines, I think it's almost directly on top of one of the side property lines, so.
Right.
Um, that's coming under review.
And then one twenty-seven Caroline.
The next one.
It's a, a pool that was built foot where it wasn't supposed to be.
Yes.
By needing CBA.
So it was approved, yeah, well, the building part was approved and met all the setbacks, but then what, they changed after the fact? Yeah, during construction, so.
I guess.
Does that sound familiar? I was gonna say, does that sound familiar?
So now variance is required, um, and that will be, is it three? No, it's a lot.
Just so you know, several variances, yeah, there's a lot.
Okay.
Who would think?
Yeah.
So you're gonna come before the wedding, or come after the wedding?
After the wedding, it was like, you have a question.
Yeah.
As it happens.
No, I, I mean, I know how it happens, it's where they get the variances and they say, oh, screw this, we wanna put it where we really want.
Everybody did confirm except you, Tracy, so. Okay, but I think they're all, for everybody else said yes. It's already been advertised, Mark.
I'm sure this is where they originally had it planned and what they wanted to do and.
Does happen.
So pessimistic. Gotta be optimistic like me, huh?
Please. All the realist.
Uh, you know me too well.
Guess it was worth a five hundred dollar fee. To do it sooner than later.
Six thirty, alright, alright.
Who's gonna be Antonio today?
No one.
elected.
It's never all that's what I was thinking.
We're gonna be out of here in like twenty-five minutes tonight.
Yes.
Yeah. And the mics.
The Thursday, November twentieth, two thousand twenty-five Incorporated Village of Port Jefferson Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting. Uh, we have one application on the agenda, thirty-three Hillcrest. Appeal ZB dash twenty dash twenty-five, Suffolk County Tax Map number zero-two-zero-six dash eighteen dash four dash ninety-seven point zero. Zoning is the RB two residential district. Location is the nearest cross street is Edgewood. The property owners are Anthony and Mary Ann Montani. Applicant is Anthony and Mary Ann Montani. Contact is Brookhaven Expedite, care of Andrew Malguanera. Description is twelve by thirteen point one foot residential addition. The proposed project requires two variances. Variance number one pursuant to village code two fifty. Attachment three, the principal residence must be located eighteen feet from one side yard within the RB two residential district. The proposed twelve by thirteen point one foot additional addition is located approximately ten feet from the eastern property line, requiring an eight-foot variance. Variance number two pursuant to village code, chapter two fifty. At attachment three, for residential structures, the proposed residence must have a combined setback of forty feet between each side yard where two sides yards are present. The proposed addition and a combined setback of to- of total of thirty-seven, of thirty point seven feet between each side yard requiring a nine point three foot variance. Andrew, you wanna come forward? Cindy, do we have all the mailings for this?
Yes, we do.
Mailings and postings were done. All right. Andrew, do you have any submissions or anything?
Uh, I have a letter, uh, from the neighbor and I have, uh, pictures.
Okay, the letter, the letter and the picture I'll take.
Yep.
Um, Andrew, did you see a copy of the report? And if you can just be sworn in by Jen, that would be great.
Yes. Andrew Malguanera, seven thirteen Main Street, Port Jefferson agent. So, uh, I'll give you the little backstory of the, of this property, I mean, this, uh, this used to be a dilapidated structure in the Village Port Jeff, uh, it was, uh, after many years redone into, into the house it is now, which is, uh, you know, one of the nicer, you know, properties in the, in the area. And, uh, you know, no complaints on, on that front, um, but this is off the master bedroom. Uh, there is not a proper, uh, closet area, and this is what we're asking for relief for. Um, not living space, just a closet. And, um, we have no problem with the CO stating can't be, you know, proper living space if, if the town, if the board, you know, feels it necessary. Um, as far as setbacks go, the overall neighborhood has similar setbacks with, with, with straight up living space, um, uh, throughout the, throughout the neighborhood, uh, has, has no adverse effects. And the neighboring property, the only one affected by it, uh, I submitted a letter from them saying that they have no issue, uh, not only do they have no issue, there is uh, significant vegetation between the neighbors, uh, so wouldn't even know it was there, uh, when it was built regardless. And, uh, let's feel the overall, you know, enhances the characteristics of, of everything else. Um, uh, housekeeping purposes, uh, the propane tanks that are on the side of the house, we moved over. They're not big, uh, propane tanks and can easily be moved, uh, to the corner of the house. They were built with the house and, uh, will be moved over accordingly, um, by the, uh, company that installed. The, uh, shed, uh, undersized, no permit necessary, uh, but will be moved, um, to, you know, where you see it on the, uh, on the, uh, survey provided. Also, the, uh, I did hear about the, uh, the pool equipment, uh, it is four point six feet. I'm not sure if, if, uh, if Port Jeff gives any construction error, uh, I think we're six inches off on that. Um, and if, if need be, will be moved, uh, to conform. And the pool permit, uh, the, uh, owner was not aware that the pool company had it open. They took the permit out back in, you know, twenty-one and never closed it out. So regardless, we will close it out from there. Uh, and the board has any questions?
Yeah, a couple, a couple of things here, um. First thing is, uh, when you move the shed, please, since there seems to be a lot of misunderstandings going on in this property, that when they move the shed, they must stay five feet off the property line.
Yes.
Okay?
Yeah, we, uh, yeah, we showed that on the survey.
Right, I understand that, but.
Understand.
We don't want any more construction errors.
Of course.
Of course. On the pool equipment, you're four point six feet from one side and can you? Okay, so you're five, okay.
Yeah.
So staff is confirming that you're, you're over five feet, uh, from the northern, it looks like four point six. Um, I'll leave, uh, I'll leave that to staff, that won't see how we handle if we wanna just.
Yep.
Move the pool equipment six inches. Um, probably in your best interest just to do that and not go through the process.
Yeah, we, we would prefer not to be backed for that.
Um, so the addition, talk to, what is the addition again, I'm sorry?
It's a walk-in closet.
Okay. Um.
One story, uh, just closet, no living space.
All right, single story, um, no living space. No plumbing, no.
No plumbing, yep.
All right, you mentioned that there are other houses similar in the neighborhood.
Yeah, if you look at the aerials, they're, they're, the houses in general are on, you know, uh, you know, if you go over.
I'm gonna go over those pictures.
Uh, I have some pictures and also a couple of houses down to the left. There, you know, various, you know, degrees of, of being close to the property line, um, with full houses. You know, we're, we're just asking for a closet that starts at ten feet, probably goes to twelve feet, you know, as the property expands to the back. Um, and again, there's no, no visibility.
We just want clarification, what, identifying.
So, okay, Andrew, just a couple of questions, you submitted these pictures.
Absolutely.
Um, myself and the board, just walk me through, Parker, do you have these pictures? All right, can you do?
Yeah, so the, the pictures are, are from the neighbor, the only neighbor that would be affected. I mean, that, though, that's a neighbor, um, that's, you know, uh, albeit not, uh, direct correlation. It is a D-Tash garage that's close to the property line. Um, and, you know, i- i- in the sense, that's the house that's close to the property line as well, fifty-one, uh, Hill Crescent, um.
So these are not the, so just do me a favor, go back, Parker, one picture.
Yep.
Um, Andrew, tell me what, do you know the pro- do you know the property num- uh?
I don't have the property number for that one, it is, it is on the street, is, you know, it is adjacent. Um, but, uh, I don't have the, the number for that, but that's a D-Tash garage.
That's on Hillcrest, though.
Correct, correct.
A corner, alright.
Uh, that one is not a corner one, I don't think, maybe it is, but that's not the corner.
But it, it's on Hillcrest, for the sake of arguments, on Hillcrest. Parker, go to the next one, please. That one there is another neighbor?
Yes, a fifty-one, I know that's fifty-one Hill Crescent.
Fifty-one Hill Crescent. Okay. Um, go ahead, Parker, go to the next one, please, um.
I don't have the, I don't have the address, uh, of this one, but it is.
It's on Hillcrest?
It's about three houses down in Hill Crescent, yes.
On Hillcrest?
Yes.
Okay. Parker, go ahead.
And that's, that's the view from the neighbor that would be affected, uh, by, by this. There, you know, there's no visibility, it's heavily vegetated, six-foot fence on top of, of, you know, the vegetation that, that is, that is there. That's a neighbor, that's from the neighbor's backyard.
From the neighbor's yard, looking at the house.
At the house, that we're talking about.
Right, so from where this, so if I, if there was a window on the eastern side of this addition, I'd be looking at that vinyl fence.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, and, um, again, I, I submitted a letter from that neighbor saying that they had no issue.
And I'll read that into the record on the public comment section.
Sure.
And next one, please, Parker.
That's just my picture of the neighbor.
Oh, the same one, alright, so the same one, right, so, okay.
Yeah, that's pretty much it, yep.
All right, uh, is anybody on the board that would like to ask any questions or comments on this application?
No.
No.
Seeing none, hearing none, I'm just going to, um, open it up for the public. I have one cor- I have one bit of correspondence submitted by Andrew. Uh, it's from Nicholas Marks, thirty-five Hillcrest, Port Jefferson, New York. Reason is Montani application, ZB dash twenty dash twenty-five, thirty-three Hillcrest Avenue. To whom it may concern, I am the owner for thirty-five Hillcrest, the direct neighbor to the applicant referenced above at thirty-three Hillcrest. I am the only neighbor that would be affected by said variance. My neighbor went over the plant, over the plans and showed what his intention for this application, and I have no objections to the variance. Our neighbor's house is immaculate and will add to the overall characteristic of the neighborhood. On top of that, there is no visibility whatsoever to us and has no effect on our living conditions. I hope the board looks favorably on this application. I thank you for your time, very truly yours, Nicholas Marks. Cindy will make this, uh, exhibit A and the pictures exhibit B. All right, um. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Hearing none and seeing none, one last time, is there anybody that would?
Wait a second.
Sure.
It is. Just so happens to be a neighbor, yes.
All right.
Yep.
So that, for clarification purposes?
Check with counsel on that and that is no issue there.
Right, so, but he is, he does reside at that property, okay? Okay, so it's just a coincidence that he.
Just happened to be, yep.
Stranger things have happened.
And I, I made, I made sure it was on the up and up before I, uh, before I submit.
Um, anybody have any questions or comments? Going once, going twice, wanna make a motion that we close this hearing? Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you. Have a good night, guys.
Yes, you too. All right, so. Questions, comments?
Correctly, as far as going for, you know.
Yeah, I never, I.
Criteria, yeah.
I never understood as an expediter, why you just don't have a form letter? That, cause most people, when you say, oh, will you write me a letter? The, the, well, it's not even that, it's just the effort of writing the letter. If you give them, if you give them the format and just say, you put it in and email it from your email, you know, just give them the. I'm not, I'm not saying, you know, in.
Have a great Thanksgiving.
Yes, you too.
Right. Uh, listen, I'm already, I already got it set up, I already got it so, I'm, I'm ready to.
Writing form letters?
I, what did I say the other day, when I retire, when I become an expediter, in the field, I'm just, I'll just stay in the village, I'll be.
What's interesting.
Be a multimillionaire.
Probably be drawing the plans for that addition as well as being the neighbor first.
It's, it's good to know people. Yes.
I do it now, just part of work, I don't even run with the company, it's just part of my services.
Right, but the, the whole, the whole thing is, is just.
It's just amazing how stupid people can be sometimes.
It, it's not, I don't know, it's sometimes always stupid, it's just, it's just someone lazy, you know, they're, oh, yeah, I'm all for it, oh, you want me to write a letter? You know, it's like.
Cause people don't have a word.
Well, it's also the, it's also the whole, oh my God, if I actually say that, they put it, that in my life, you know, I mean, we live in a litigious society, so. Um, but, but it's more the effort.
I think if somebody said, okay, here's a letter, just sign your name, and like you said, send.
It's not even that, you could say, I will email you the format, all you have to do is put it in your email, put your email header on it and forward it onto the village, you know?
Exactly.
There you go, two clicks that you can do from your phone while you're driving.
Staff has no comment.
Every day, try.
Did you not hear the litigious society comment?
While you're driving, come on, how many times do you sit at a light and the guy in front of you, you're like, dude, when he's on his phone? By the way, I'm that guy. All right, so we can do some housekeeping here, um. Any questions, comments, I mean, hold that for a walk-in closet, God bless him. Um, but.
Why?
Um, the neighbor, the neighbor doesn't have an objection that's gonna be affected. The addition is to the back. Um, I think we. This neighbor is Marks, the closest to this looks like the shed here.
Got it.
Oh, he pulled up the aerial again.
He, um, you know.
I was just curious.
I mean, the property, he's aware, um. So we're gonna have a couple of conditions on this. Uh, on this one, even though we said it, I'm still gonna condition it, cause custom, as far as I can throw. Um, but, let's go from there. Uh, I'm gonna walk, we have two, we have two variances, so we're gonna be doing the criteria for each, we're gonna vote on each one separately, cause that's how they were advertised, so I'd like to s- stay consistent.